Welcome, welcome, welcome. My name is Ryan Blackledge. I chair the Government Affairs Committee for the Greensboro Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for coming here today. Thank you for the candidates. I know a lot of times at these events, people thank candidates for running at the end. I would like to start with that. Can we please give them a round of applause for taking the time to run, putting themselves out there? And in particular, today, answering my ridiculous questions. So, the way we're going to do this, I've got a way to randomize, alternate who gets to go first, and it involves a very elaborate system with these note cards that I'm going to select at random. As I told the candidates earlier, I did a forum earlier this year with six candidates, and just a six-sided die, and the number two kept coming up again and again and again. So, I've got a system. We're going to go through, we're going to do just a few questions. We will not have time to take questions from the audience, but the candidates, they're around, and I'm sure they would love to answer questions if they've got a few minutes before they have to run to their next event. So, with that, candidates, any questions before we get started? All right. We're going to go ahead and do it. There's an opening question, during which time I'd like you to also go ahead and introduce yourself. Opening question is, why have you chosen to run for this office? And if elected, what would you like to accomplish in the first 100 days? Again, why have you chosen to run? What would you like to accomplish in the first 100 days? And we're going to start with Sharon Hightower, District One, followed by Crystal Black with District One.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, thank you for having us here today. I've chosen to run for reelection to continue the work that has been started in District One, whether it's economic opportunity with jobs that have been created in our district that are going to help to change people's socioeconomic status, whether it's small businesses that I've been supporting, and I am pushing for the legislation that we received from Raleigh to be enacted, and I need to see that through, and as well as our community safety around infrastructure and transit, which we have been working toward. And so, in the first 100 days, it's a couple of things I want to do. Number one, see that SBE legislation made policy here in the city of Greensboro, because I know the impact it will have on those small businesses. Number two, community safety. And I want to push ensuring that our community has a great relationship with the police by implementing community policing. It is something that communities asked for for years, and we've gotten some pushback for not doing it, but it's time for us to step up and do it. There has to be a relationship so the community feels safe, and they feel like they can trust the police to come to their community and respect their community, and treat them with fairness and equity the way they expect, not to over-police, under-police, but to simply just make people feel secure in the community. And I'm planning to push that. There's one other thing that has not been on the table, we haven't heard about, but it's participatory budgeting. And participatory budgeting is a democratic process that has allowed districts to choose the projects they want to see happen in their community. And that has to be re-implemented, so that people in the community feel more engaged and have more say about the way they want to live.
Ms. Hightower, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Crystal Black.
Good afternoon. I am running for the District One seat, because I am not seeing progress in District One. I believe after 12 years, we have been stagnant with growth. I think that the growth that has happened has been in a concentrated area of Greensboro and not all over our district. I also believe that our small businesses, I would love for them to have an advisory committee, where they can collectively come together to talk about how to move forward in the city, not just District One, instead of it actually being managed by our council. I look forward to continuing relationships with people like our public safety departments. I believe public safety is not just our police, but our fire, as well as our code enforcement. And all of those together impact our businesses, and I think that we need to look at how we can improve that on a city level, and not just a district level, but the impact in District One and the stagnant movement in District One is why I'm running. Thank you.
All right. Thank you much. Continuing with the same question, turning to District Four, first hearing from Nikki Smith, then Adam Marshall. Again, same question, why have you chosen to run for office, and what do you hope to accomplish in your first 100 days?
Is the mic on? Yes. My name is Nikki Smith. This is the best time to be in Greensboro. We have tremendous opportunities to grow Greensboro, but we've got to do it with the proper leadership. For 30 years, we have not had, in my opinion, the best leadership in our city council, but it's time to bring some new leadership, and we have the first time in my lifetime as a business owner here in Greensboro since 1984, to bring fresh, new leadership and new ideas because of the outgoing or retiring city council leaders. So, what am I going to do in my first 10 days or year at city council? I plan to, number one, look very closely at our taxes in the city. We cannot sustain an $830 million tax in our city. Number two, I want safer neighborhoods. I'm tired of Interstate 40 being Wendover Avenue going 80 miles an hour. And number three, I want more transparency in our government processes and what all we're doing. So, I'm asking for your vote tonight as Nikki Smith in District Four, as I've been here since 1984, as a business leader in the community, a successful business leader, and I'm looking for my time to come up, and it hasn't yet, so I'll keep on talking. I'm used to shorter time limits. Thank you for the time. So, in 1984, I moved to Greensboro, built my first business, about 44 employees, and have grown every business after that, and been a serial entrepreneur. I am not a politician. I am a business leader. I am an owner of businesses in Greensboro, and I look forward to stepping into this role, because it's all about timing. Time is important right now, in that you have to step into a role at the right time of your life. And that right now, in my business life, I can step away from it, and only be there a couple of days a week, and walk into a city council position and bring leadership skills that the city needs badly right now. And I thank you for your vote.
All right. Thank you. Adam Marshall?
I'm Adam Marshall. I'm also running in District Four. I'm running because I'm a Greensboro native. This is home to me. This is where my wife and I are raising our family. This is where I came back after college and law school. So, I'm passionate about this city. I'm a partner at law firm Carolinas here in Greensboro. My partners and I manage a small business of about 60 people, of five offices in two states. So, also have a lot of business experience as well. I spent about a decade serving on boards and commissions with the city. And if you're applying for a job, who wouldn't want to learn as much about the city as you possibly can? I've been on the Human Relations Commission, the Board of Adjustment, the Zoning Commission, Greensboro Criminal Justice Advisory Commission, and now I'm on the ABC Board. So, I've gained a lot of experience over the years. I can hit the ground running on day one. I've been endorsed by the Police and Fire Labor Associations, the Builders Association, today the Simkins PAC, as well as the Greensboro Regional Realtors Association. In my first 100 days, look, I'm going to be the new kid in town. So, I will work with my fellow council members to build a spirit of collaboration. I think that's first and foremost. And then, I want to work with the Road to 10,000, making sure we have enough housing for our citizens in Greensboro. Let's make it the Road to 20,000, or the Road to 30,000. We need more units here, and that's what I'm looking to do.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll go to District Five, starting with Tammy Thurm, followed by Jeanette Davidson, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm Tammy Thurm, the current District Five representative. I moved here 50 years ago last month to come to school here and stayed, and I stayed because I fell in love with it. One of my goals for Greensboro as a whole, and why I'm running again, is because I want your kids and your grandkids and the students that are currently in school here to also fall in love with Greensboro and find a home there that they can love and grow their families and move through their life. I spent much of my career as the CFO or VP of Operations for very large, family-owned businesses here in Greensboro and in High Point, manufacturing, a serial entrepreneur law firm, and several other smaller positions. My first 100 days, many of you all may know that I've been working very hard for a while on bringing our first permanent supportive housing project for the homeless community to Greensboro. We finally have a piece of property, and I'm very excited that we have a location now. We need to be signing contracts and getting this project underway. So, that will be, as far as my individual goal, a real goal, to get that off the ground so that we can start fundraising for this project. The goal is to raise $30 million, and I've got folks willing to help with that. The other thing that I think is going to be critical in these first 100 days is to make sure that all our new council members get up to speed so that we don't lose any time. We've got the next four years one time, and this is a critical time for our growth, and we need to make sure that we're all ready to hit the ground running. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Jeanette Davidson, Mayor.
Hello. I am Jeanette Davidson, Mayor. I am the new kid on the block. Been in this great, wonderful state for five glorious years, and I am having a blast making Greensboro my new home. I've traveled all over the western side of the United States, Air Force Brat, and everywhere I go, I make sure to make it home. I have former city council experience in my past town, as well as HR and business experience with a multimillion-dollar company, working very closely with the owner, both financially and with the HR. I loved it. With this experience, I want to continue the servant heart mentality, to continue to serve other people. I have a long history with nonprofits. That's how much my dedication is for our communities and everybody else. So, the first 100 days, that's a good tricky question, because there's a lot we can accomplish and a lot of things we can start to accomplish. Some of the starters is I want to make sure we focus on our current residents and businesses, because when we take care of our current citizens, our current population, and help them grow, they will help us grow economically and physically, and we can reach the road to 10, 20, 30,000, however many more, as we grow and develop in needing attainable housing, multi-income housing. I also want to work on crime, property taxes, a lot of mixture of everything that we need to work on, as well as, remember, any servant leader, it's always going to be a learning curve. There's always going to be continual learning, and that is the only way that we can show that we are dedicated, not only to the job, but to serving our constituents.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to turn to District Two, starting with C.C. Crawford, and then Monica Walker.
Can you hear me? My name is Cecily C.C. Crawford. I am from the district that I'm running for, which is District Two. I am the proud granddaughter of educators, and also my grandfather, as he was teaching at North Carolina A&amp;T State University, Aggie Pride, was actually running a store on the hill. If you know anything about East Greensboro, South Side, Douglas Park area, you'll know where that area was. It was what was considered even then a food desert, and he opened a small shop that had basics that people from across the street, Ray Warren and some of the areas around, could come and grab some things that they needed. On top of that, my mother was also an educator, but she only got into education after she worked at the Chamber of Commerce in the late 80s. And basically, she did business after hours. She also owned the Carousel Gift Shop over on Alamance Church Road, and currently has her own small business at the Farmer's Market. And so, I understand what families can go through when you're trying to run a small business, and I want to make sure that as we look into this first 100 days, that, one, we are getting to know all of the department heads, the staff, also bringing in neighborhood leaders, and mostly bringing in our small businesses to find out where the barriers are. And mostly, that is what we'll do in the first 100 days when we have our first town hall for District Two. Also, I spoke to small business leaders before I came, just to make sure that I was asking for what they want. And they want a District Two Community Advisory Table, so residents and business owners have a direct voice in shaping solutions. And also, they want to push for a Small Business Relief and Growth Fund that partners with local CDFIs like Self-Help and LCCU, Latin Community Credit Union, to expand access to capital. And then, also to make sure that when we are talking about small businesses and organizations and companies that want to bid for city projects, that we continue to make sure that it is equitably going to women and black and minority businesses.
Thank you. Monica Walker?
Good afternoon. I'm Monica Walker, and I'm not homegrown. I moved here 23 years ago and grew to love this city. I live down on the lower end near Bennett College, and I moved to that community on purpose. There are so many people that often see, I live in what is easily described as perhaps the most highly impacted area of all of this city, but I moved there on purpose. And I moved there because while some people see problems, I see possibilities. One of the things that I've said about as a part of my platform is I'm inviting the residents of District Two to reimagine District Two. You know, I call it the place of possibilities, because here's the thing that I believe and I fully understand and I'm committed to, and that is, if you take the area that is the most highly impacted of a city and you improve it, you move the entirety of the city. And so, I'm excited about the possibility of what can happen in District Two, because it gets to grow, to expand, to improve all of the entirety of this city. When I think about the first 100 days, the first thing I will do, you know, it's interesting, because Adam has already made us a singing group, the New Kids on the Block. I think I've heard that twice now, so it's a bunch of us, right? We're going to be singing together. But what I understand is, is that there's a lot about also city operations, I don't pretend to know, but I know that I can spend the time with the staff of the city, understanding each area of city operations, what it does, why it does, how it does, and the goal for which it does. In addition to that, then it becomes important likewise, while I'm meeting with city leadership, is also while I feel like I've already been on a tour of really understanding what city residents or residents of district do want, I think there's more time that can be spent there. So, I think it's important to have a listening tour and to try as best one can to begin to merge and to marry all of those possibilities, what people are already doing, against what are the things that people also feel that they are without and that they're in need of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one remaining candidate, District Three, Zach Matheny.
And the best for last, right? When I first ran in 2007, I simply cared about the community. I was volunteering for about 16 different organizations, and some friends and folks came to me, and maybe they weren't friends, because they talked me into this, but it was really a heartfelt care about the community. I was able, through those years, from 2007 to 2015, to have many terrific mentors, and so I would argue that we have not had poor leadership the last 30 years. I learned from folks like Jim Melvin, from Yvonne Johnson, from Lowell Easter, and many, many more, that helped educate me on the city, the history, and thinking about how to govern with heart and fact and information. And so, one of the main things I want to do over the next four years is, I'm not a new kid on the block. I want to bring continuity to that strategic vision, and I don't want to lose what we've got, the momentum. So, I want to strategize, and I'll talk more about that. I want to continue to be an active member of the community. I've been an active member for over 20 years now, and I don't want to go anywhere. I care about this community still. I'm a widower, raising a 13 and a 15-year-old that I love very much, that I want to stay in Greensboro. The things that have always been on my list are public safety, and I am also endorsed by the Greensboro Professional Police Officers Association and the Professional Firefighters Association. Job creation, I've been a part of those things with Toyota, Boom, Jet Zero, Marshall Aviation, to say a few. But those things, we set in motion about 13 to 15 years ago. Where are we going the next five, 10, 20-plus years? And so, what are we going to do on strategy and vision? Water and sewer is a major part of that. And then, I want to help the new kids on the block understand the job of a city council person and the job of a city. You're elected in a district, in my case, but you govern the city. I'm Zach Matheny. I'm running in District Three.
All right. Thank you very much. For those of you who are not candidates, you might not know that we did provide the candidates questions ahead of time. However, we provided them a list of like 15 potential questions. So, to help me pick between whatever the next question is going to be, Crystal, could you please pick one of these cards?
The pressure.
I know, the pressure. All right, fantastic. That's going to be question two in my group here. So, question two that I've got here is, how can the city of Greensboro continue the momentum in its economic development efforts? Again, how can the city of Greensboro continue the momentum in its economic development efforts? We're going to start with District Four, Nikki Smith.
Question, Nikki. How do we continue the economic growth, is that what your question is?
That is.
Okay.
How do we continue the momentum of the economic development?
Well, I think there's a lot of things we can do. Number one, we've got to build more homes in Greensboro, so that as we grow, it would be Jet Zero, Boom, we've got the homes, we've got the areas for community to move into our community. Number two, we've got to continue to look at our small businesses in Greensboro and lift them up and help them grow from a two- or three-employer company to a 10- or 20-employer company, because they're going to need growth also in the community. We have to continue to search for new manufacturing that needs to come to Greensboro to continue to complement what we're already doing in the aerospace engineering. We can't just focus on aerospace. I think it's a great idea that Jim Melvin did, you know, 40, 50 years ago with the aerospace industry out there, but we've got to look at other things. We've got to figure out what replaces the textile industry, the manufacturing industry, the things that were in High Point, the things that were in Greensboro, the Cone Mills Corporation. All of those things need to come back, and I think one of those is manufacturing. I think the other thing we need to do within Greensboro is we have to be a more welcoming city. We're already welcoming a lot of new businesses to Greensboro, but we've got to make ourselves more friendly to new businesses popping up within Greensboro.
All right. Adam Marshall?
Hopefully, winning breeds more winning. I think we've had a lot of good economic development wins over the last 10 years. A lot of people in this room have worked very hard to make that happen, and I think we can continue down that path. We can work with the city to shorten timeframes that it takes to get vertical or to get from concept to build. We can work on that as a council. We can sell Greensboro's quality of life. That's one of the great things about this city. It's one of the things that I think we have that some of the bigger cities in our state don't have anymore. We've got great schools, we've got great green spaces, and we have a lower cost of living. Those are things that we can use to recruit new businesses to come here, to encourage entrepreneurs to start small businesses. You know, when I left college and I came back to Greensboro, I knew what we had here, but everybody else was looking at me like I had three heads. Why are you going to Greensboro when you could go to Raleigh or Charlotte? We have a lot to offer here, and we need to market the hell out of it.
All right. Next, District One, hearing first from Sharon Hightower, then Crystal Black.
Do you mind repeating the question?
Yes. The question was, how can the city of Greensboro continue the momentum in its economic development efforts?
So, what we can continue to do is to build upon the companies that we have recruited here already. And so, those companies come when we have discussions with them to understand that how they must respect the residents of this community, first by making sure they pay living wages. That is the one conversation we must continue to have with them. I don't support any company that comes that pays below the minimum wage that the city of Greensboro has set. And currently, we've set it at $20 an hour with this past budget. And if a company is coming here and you're going to want employees here, you must invest in them by paying them a living wage. So, we need to continue to ensure that these companies that we recruit here understand the vision that the city expects to have happen, as we support small businesses. Everybody talks about them being the foundation, but the city of Greensboro has invested in small business. This past budget, we put $2.5 million into Piedmont Business Capital, a local CDFI that provides resources to those small businesses, whether it's bonding assistance, insurance assistance, that was funded by the city with Piedmont Business Capital. Number, and otherwise, we have to also make sure, as I said earlier, that small business enterprise that is approved and enacted by the General Assembly is a race and gender-neutral program, so that it supports all small businesses. And the MWP Advisory Committee that we have is not a council-appointed committee, it is an occupation-driven committee. So, you have on that committee contractors, architects, professional services, goods and services, prime companies. We have to continue sending that message of how important economic development is, to make sure that we are offering all those opportunities to those large and small businesses as they have grown this community, and bring an economic impact tax-based to our district. And in District One, we most recently--
Ms. Hightower, thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I was a little bit beyond. Crystal Black?
I think, you know, to, I'm in education, and I believe that in order to have a healthy economic pipeline, we need to look at how we are going to feed these businesses that we're establishing in our city. We have a great CTE program with Guilford County Schools. However, there is not a good webbed blend between our corporate businesses that pipes down to our high schoolers. And, you know, even in the elementary level, they're talking about how to introduce elementary students to industry, and what that would look like from an elementary, middle school, high school level. I think that when we talk about economic development, we have to provide something that people want to stay here to actually see through. So, it's great to erect these businesses and to bring in what we call, you know, economic development on a surface level, but how do we sustain it? And I believe that you sustain it through our universities and through our public school system, to try to make sure that we are garnering those future leaders that we have within our companies and in our businesses in Greensboro, so that they want to stay. And that will sustain our economic development over decades.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to turn to District Two, starting with Monica Walker.
It's interesting, because actually, about two weeks ago, all of us were invited to do a meeting greet at North Carolina A&amp;T State University with the students there, and I must have talked to no less than about 30 students. And of the 30 that I spoke to, one said that they were going to stay in Greensboro, and he added to the fact that he was staying in Greensboro. He'd stay for about two years, but then he'd be looking to leave. I don't think there's any economic growth or a way to maintain or to spur economic growth. The economic growth of any city is in its people. The people are the engine. And so, one of the things that I've been looking at and studying is tactical urbanism, but also looking at that through the lens of people-powered energy, talent retention. What do we do? As a matter of fact, you know, when I spoke to those students, seven universities that are putting out engineers and lawyers and doctors and nurses and psychologists and teachers, in all manifestation of people that helped to build a city. But while we're producing that kind of creativity, that brilliance, that energy, somehow, we're not able to maintain it. You know, I talked to the kids, I said, "Well, what is it that would, in fact, have you stay?" They talked about, you know, wanting to live in a cool city, wanting to live in a city that offered, you know, incredible entertainment, good restaurants, nice places to live, beautiful communities, and all of that. And so, I think our energy, our investment should be focused very, very heavily on the young people that, number one, we recruit them here to go to school. Well, while we've got them here, we need to be building on the possibilities for them to want to be able to be part of the future of the city. And we do that by planning smart, inclusive, comprehensive types of strategies and a plan that says that, listen, we helped to grow you here, we need you to remain here, because we believe that we can build a far better city than we have right now, because of all of the energy and the brilliance that has been poured into you. So, I think that, again, economic growth is the engine, is our people, and we must invest very heavily in our young people.
All right. Thank you very much. C.C.
So, to continue the economic development, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think we've done a good job in getting these mega sites coming to Greensboro. What we need to do is to balance the success of getting mega sites in with investing in under-invested commercial corridors. In my district, that looks like Summit, Bessemer, Gate City Boulevard, used to be Lee Street, Phillips Avenue, those areas, there are anchor businesses that have been there for generations that we would like to see stay there and continue to grow. Small businesses in our community circulate dollars. So at the farmer's market, there is a rule that you need to be able to source all of your, your items within a hundred mile radius. That puts money back into the communities in which those businesses sit, right? We spend a lot of money in District Two to go across town and spend money in areas like Friendly Shopping Center, Four Seasons Mall, that takes money out of our district. I want to look at how we can better invest in small business inside of our district that can also make the gaps of the things that we need. So we are one of the places that needs to create more workforce development for all of these mega sites coming in. I am endorsed by labor unions here in Greensboro, CWA, AFL-CIO, because I do work to fight with our city workers to make sure that they get a living wage. Currently, our firefighters are also feeling a pinch around what benefits will look like. All of us will be dealing with what benefits look like. And so how do we take care of our workforce as we look to continue our economic development of the city, but also to take care of the small businesses that have been here and helped our communities thrive?
All right, thank you very much. Turning to District Three, Zach Matheny. And again, the question is, how can the city of Greensboro continue the momentum in its economic development efforts?
You know, there's a lot of good things that have been said. I think one of the main things that the city of Greensboro needs to do, based on the experience that I, I have, is work with our partners better, break down the silos. You know, I think Brent, Marvin and their team at the Chamber of Commerce, Guilford County, you know, Economic Development Alliance, you know, you talk about talent recruitment. You've got Cecilia Thompson here with Action Greensboro on what her team has done for talent recruitment, the Boomerang. Quite frankly, the state of North Carolina and our legislators, we could have a much better relationship than we do with them. They've been good to us on some announcements and some incentives, but there's still area for improvement on that relationship. The federal government, where they have much larger dollars. I get back to water and sewer. Folks, if, if water and sewer is not on your mind, you're not thinking about growth and economic development. For housing, much less jobs. You know, you can certainly learn from other communities for best practices, but we've got to be on the same page. The other thing is, on the small business front, is I think we do a pretty decent job with small business throughout. And so, you know, the truth is, small business is the backbone of the community, and you can't lose sight of helping those folks as well. But really, we've got organizations that do great work. Let's get on the same page and continue to work together because we've been successful, and we can and will be successful going forward.
All right, thank you. Turning to District Five, starting with Tammy Thurm, followed by Jeanette Davidson, Mayor.
Thank you. Zach hit on one major issue for me in terms of keeping the momentum going. The momentum we're enjoying now was started, as someone said, twenty, thirty years ago, the creation and idea of eight forty going around our city and starting the wheels in motion for that infrastructure. We've got the same challenges, we just have to plan thirty years in front of us for infrastructure. One of the biggest items we're dealing with right now and will be dealing with is water and particularly sewer and making sure that we have the capacity in our sewer systems, in our water systems, that we have the cooperation regionally between the county, the city, smaller towns around us, because we're all impacted by that. And if we don't have water and sewer capabilities, we're in trouble in terms of any additional large-scale growth. So I would like to see us get back to a partnership with the county on how we approach water and sewer and branch that out even farther. Water and sewer infrastructure is very, very expensive, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. And, you know, I would have to think from what I've learned from Brent and Marvin and Marshall is that one of the things that we have to look at when somebody's interested in coming here is how much water and sewer capacity do you need and do we have enough capacity for you? So as we're looking long, long range into the next thirty years, we need to be investing now so that when those become issues ten, twenty years from now, the wheels are already in motion.
All right, thank you. And Jeanette Davidson, Mayor?
It's hard to add to something that's already been said very well and eloquently by the majority of everybody on this panel, so I'm going to take it just a smidge of a different direction and talk about the collaboration that needs to happen in order to make all these grand ideas take place. And that is, as mentioned, collaborating with the schools. We also need to work with job retraining for the current job market that we have. We have some of the highest, above high, higher than the national average on unemployment rates right now. So what kind of job retraining can we do with our current workforce so that they can be prepared for these new businesses that are coming in, as well as the value-added service businesses that will be coming in in place to complement the businesses that are here and moving in? We also do need to, like we said, work with the schools, trade, bring the trades back into the schools, start training our kids and on computers. We need to have a lot more computer programming. AI is here to stay. We need to figure out how to make it a safer program to utilize. So many beneficial things that we could do, and I'm going to just end it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next question, one of the primary responsibilities of city council is to pass the annual budget, which I've got right here. So, so first off, have you read the 2025, 26 city budget? If yes, what is one thing you like about it and what is one thing you don't like about it? And if you have not read this budget, I have a few extra copies with me here today, and will you make a commitment to read it prior to election day? Again, have you read the budget? If yes, one thing you like, one thing you don't like. If not, will you take a copy of the budget from me today? All right, we're going to start with District Five, and I'm going to play executive privilege here. Tammy, you have gotten to go twice already, so I'm going to let Jeanette go first on this one.
I get the hardest question.
Unless she wants to pass.
I would happily let Tammy go first on this one. This is the toughest question. I have not thoroughly read the budget. Does that count?
That, that, that counts.
The part that, I'm going to start with the part that I like the least. There, I, I just feel like there's not a complete audit of each department and where the funds go outside of, when we give funds to other entities, where does, how's that funny, funds utilized so that we can make sure that they're using the money, the taxpayer money correctly? And as far as what I like about it, for what I read of it, there's not much. I have seen more efficient budgets in my career, both in city and at a multimillion-dollar company, than I've seen with that one. A lot of holes are missing. Granted, there is no perfect budget, I will say that. And I don't have experience with the city, so I could be lacking some experience and knowledge there, and I will take that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I've read the budget several times over. In terms of what I like about the budget, I like that we are continuing to invest ahead of time in our water infrastructure in terms of how we're addressing PFAS and PFOAs in our water. It's a challenge for all communities, and, you know, the government just recently, in the past year or so, came out with the new standards. I am proud of the fact that with our investments in infrastructure, that we are anticipating that we will be in full compliance two years ahead of where we're required to be, which is, which is a great statement for the folks that run our water department because they're not just focusing on meeting requirements, they're focusing on giving us, meeting that requirement as quickly as possible. So that's one of the things I like about it. In terms of what I don't like about it, we don't have enough money in that budget for maintenance and repairs for our current infrastructure that we have. We have a huge backlog of maintenance and repair items that we need to address, and we just haven't been able to finance those to the level that we need to be.
All right, thank you. Next, turning to District Two, starting with C.C. Crawford, followed by Monica Walker.
Yes, so in my day job, I work for American Friends Service Committee, and we launched this initiative called Keep Gate City Housed. It's a large coalition of faith owner, of faith leaders, homeowners, landlords, tenants. And one of the things that we asked the city council to add to the budget was four hundred and forty thousand dollars to continue to have legal aid expand to be in the courthouse to help what we see as sixteen thousand households facing eviction every year. Those are your, your, the folks who come and buy the goods at your businesses, right? When we are able to get the city to add things like expansion for legal aid, we also got one point four seven million dollars for rental assistance. This helps to stabilize communities and make people feel safe enough to spend their money. The second thing, the thing that I don't like about the budget, and yes, we've read through the, or I've read through the budget extensively with a collective of people, is that as a Parks and Rec Commissioner, we have been advocating, like Tammy said, we've been advocating for a deferred maintenance fund. One of the ways, like Monica uplifted, that young folks like to stay is they want to be able to go to the parks, they want to go to the recreation centers, they want to take part in these beautiful green spaces, and yet these will be unsafe if we continue to not fund a deferred maintenance.
All right, thank you. Monica Walker?
Yeah, I'm going to say, Ryan, that the thing I like the most about the budget is the thing I like the least. And that is, is that I'm not only acquainted with this year's budget, I'm acquainted with last year's budget. And the thing that stands out about the budget is that it increases, and that's logically, it makes sense. The problem that I have is that I, in the, remember I say I lived in the most highly impacted area of Greensboro? And while I look at the money that we spent on infrastructure, the money we spent on public safety, the money we spent on staffing and what have you, the one that I'm most concerned about and is the most problematic for me is that, infrastructurally speaking, I don't see that investment. I am, I serve as the president of my neighborhood association, but I'm the coordinator and the founder of bringing together eight neighborhood associations that are all between Martin Luther King, Girl Street and, and Florida Street. And when I think about the experiences of those seven, eight neighborhood associations, we're all experiencing the same problems, and we do not see, when we look at the infrastructure of a budget, we cannot see that that has been spent in our communities. That becomes problematic for me. So I'm looking at these things that I think are important. They are important to every community, and they are extremely important to a community that lacks, when I think about potholes, when I think about sidewalks, when I think about the streets, when I think about all of the things that make for a beautiful neighborhood where people prosper and thrive, it becomes very difficult to read a budget and recognize that you invest in that budget as a community resident, but you're simply not seeing that the money that is being spent by the city is reflected on your side of Greensboro. So that becomes very problematic for me, and I'm really digging into that budget. And the last thing I'll say as I see my time here is that the transparency of the budget, you can see that the money is being spent. I'm not always able to see where it's being sent, simply that it's being spent.
All right, thank you. Turning now to District Four, we're going to start with Adam Marshall, followed by Nikki Smith. Again, the question, have you read the budget? If so, one thing you like, one thing you don't like? And if not, I've got some extra copies here and can send you home with one.
I have read the budget, and, and some of the things that I like are that about a quarter of it is for public safety. That is how we keep our best and brightest public safety officers here. That is how we stay safe as a community, and we're doing that. We've also made smart line item type decisions with closing certain facilities when they are absolutely not used. We've done that with library hours, and that has saved us money. One of the things that I don't like, and it's, it's what we've all talked about, we are hundreds of millions of dollars in deferred maintenance. That cannot sustain itself. That is not going to get any cheaper, it is only going to go up. My kid, my son plays city baseball. When my daughter wants to go to the bathroom, it's not a great place to go. She swims year round at the GAC. I don't know if anybody's been in there recently when there are a lot of people, but that AC is lacking. We have a lot of work to do with our facilities here at Greensboro, and it's not going to get any cheaper. We've got to start chipping away at it.
All right, thank you. Nikki Smith?
There's some benefit of going last on this question, and I will say that, no, I have not read the entire budget. I asked my friend Chatty, who knows Chatty, ChatGPT to look at it for me. And so, and I have a father that's CPA, and a daughter that's CPA, and a wife that's CPA, and I've asked them to look at it. But I will tell you that I have a concern about our budget. I'm concerned that in the last ten years, we've gone from four hundred and fifty million dollars a year to eight hundred and thirty million dollars a year, and our population has only increased approximately twenty percent. So I'm concerned there's something out of balance there. Now, am I concerned that we're not investing in infrastructure? Absolutely. Is that a part of the budget? Or is that part of our capital expenditure that we need to look at, how we invest in infrastructure to build out the new, new parts of our city, the boundaries? Yes, we do need to look at those areas. Are we investing a lot, enough money in our police and our safety? I don't think we are. I think we're short on police officers, we're short on police cars, and we're short on not having safer neighborhoods. And I think last but not least, I think we have to do a line item detail. We have to do an audit of what we are spending money for, and are we getting a return on our investment as citizens? But we as citizens of Greensboro cannot stand another tax increase as we've already seen over the last few years. My taxes have gone up, and I'm sure yours have too. And so we've got to look at what we're spending money for, and what are the people in the community of Greensboro want to spend money on? And I will say, infrastructure, number one, but I'm not sure how that's spent. Number two, we've got to spend money on public safety. And number three, we've got to look at what we're spending money on now, how we can adjust that and look at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we're going to go to District Three with Zach Matheny.
Thank you. Yes, I've read the budget. This is my twelfth budget, and I've read them all. My first budget was about three hundred million dollars, and as was mentioned, this one's eight hundred and thirty million dollars. There are significant efficiencies that could be created in the budget, and I think we look at it from an emotional standpoint versus a strategic and business standpoint. Case in point, you can love it or hate it, but the whole loose leaf discussion to save approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars when the city couldn't answer the questions about debt service and how much the trash cans were going to cost and all the other things, it wasn't a strategic decision. We've got many more efficiencies we could create. Two years ago, the police chief came up with a terrific plan to increase police compensation so that we could hire the necessary police officers that the city needs. And so by paying them more, we were able to get basically a full-time staff. And so that'll be something we'll need to look at going forward. But you had one department head out of thirty-something that came up with a strategic plan to enhance their department. There should be more department heads that come up with those efficiencies. We are terrible landlords. You can go look at the cultural building and see that we're terrible landlords. The deferred maintenance we did, I think we snuck in five hundred thousand dollars for the Parks and Rec Deferred Maintenance. That's not going to cover the Bog Garden. The Nussbaum Fund, housing, we spent more on administrative costs and through designs and other things from a church that we shouldn't have taken instead of helping those retain housing or get into housing that they deserve. So to somebody's point, the transparency of staff on how the funds are used, not just allocated. And so there's a lot that I could pick on- And so there's a lot that I could pick on, but just thinking about it, folks, this is an $850 million business and we had 10% vote. Tell people to vote. This is your dollars. Let's go.
All right, finally, turning to District One candidates. Again, the question, have you read the budget? If you've read it, what's one thing you like, one thing you don't like? If you haven't, will you take a copy of the budget from me today and make a commitment to read it before the election? We're going to start with Crystal Black.
I have read the budget and I'll still take a copy.
Fantastic.
Uh, is this on? Can you hear me? I will say that I was pleased that there was at least some acknowledgement that there needs to be funding for some of the deferred maintenance for Parks and Rec, although not enough. Sometimes just acknowledging that we need to move forward with some advancement was helpful. Also was pleased that Gate City House got funded as well because they have proven that keeping people in their homes is effective, and I have watched them grow and watched them prosper in the work that they're doing. So I was excited to see those two things. Also believe that we need to fund our public safety, so I looked forward to seeing that funded, but I would like for us to consider public safety not just in our police department, but in our fire and in our code enforcement, so that we are funding those equitably, because they are intertwined. And if we look at public safety as a whole and start to think forward in funding that collectively, I think that we will find that a lot of what police do, or what fire do, or what our code enforcement does is kind of interconnected. What I did not like about the budget was the fact that we did not get what we needed for parks and recreation, specifically because in District One and District Two, our parks are the most underserved. The deferred maintenance that they're speaking of is, you know, equipment that's in violation where kids can't play on it. There's contaminated parks that we need to address. So I think that not seeing those type of things in underserved communities addressed within the budget is something that I would like to see going forward. However, I'm not confident about the budget because I also watch money move throughout the year, so what's budgeted doesn't always end up what happens in our city. So what I would like our city to do is to stick with what they budgeted and not move money around to support pet projects. Thank you.
All right, Sharon Hightower with the last word.
So yes, I have read, as Zach said, many, many budgets. And so I've read the last one a couple of times, as a matter of fact. One of the things I guess I like the best is that we didn't raise taxes, because that is what we heard from citizens, "Don't raise our taxes," from seniors who say, "Don't raise our taxes," because we're barely living in our homes now. And if the taxes go up anymore, I'm going to lose where I live. And we cannot see people displaced, those that have paid for their homes and now living off retirement income. And so that is something that we have to make sure that we're stewardess over. But yeah, there are some things in the budget I think that can happen. We need to combine housing and planning together, because if you're planning, you're planning for housing just as much as you're planning for business. So why are there two departments doing two different things, but that they could come together and do one comprehensive focus on neighborhoods and commercial development? So, and the one thing I did not like, and so I've supported in times past, police officers getting raises, which I was very upset over initially, but I understand the rationale, firefighters getting a little raise. But let me tell you who's neglected. The man who picks up your trash does not get what he deserves to get paid to sit in that stinking truck all day, pick up your garbage and not get paid an adequate wage. Some of them are working two jobs. They work Monday, Tuesday, off on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. They work a job on Wednesday. And so I was very disappointed because I pushed for them to get $23 an hour, and instead they only got 20. They deserve to make a living wage. The very same way we tell businesses that come here, that you should pay your employees a living wage, we need to do the same thing at the city for our city employees. So I got endorsed by FL-CIO, who represents unions, because I support the bus drivers who are also union as well, and many people don't even know that, but they are. But they deserve to take care of their family.
Ms. Hightower, you're getting the last word and you're getting an extra 20 seconds in there.
Well, you know, you have to shut me down.
All right, all right, thank you, ma'am, thank you. Everyone, I mentioned it at the beginning, I'm going to say it again, it takes a lot to take time out of your life to dedicate yourself to public service and just to running for office. I'm sure that y'all have events later today, events tomorrow, events the next day to make it to. Thank you for taking the time. To those of you who are watching this replay, thank you for taking the time to watch. Please go out and vote at this time. Please join me in thanking the candidates for their time today. All right, we'll stand at ease for just a few minutes while we do a swap-out on candidates. Thank you.